Monday, January twenty second, twenty twenty four to order. Everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilperson Winkelman.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, I'll go ahead and take a roll. Councilperson Bradley?
Here.
Councilperson Kimfer?
Here.
Councilperson Ginever?
Here.
Councilperson Friedmeyer?
Here.
Councilperson Fisher?
Here.
Councilperson Schomburg?
Here.
Councilperson Winkelman?
Here.
Councilperson Massa? Massa. Alright. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda for the council meeting for Monday, January twenty second, twenty twenty four. I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, has the agenda been posted, dated, and signed? Thank you ma'am. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of December eighteenth, twenty twenty three. Give you a moment to look through those. I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. I'll also entertain a motion to approve the closed minutes on the following dates. Let me go back. Closed minutes for June twelfth, twenty twenty three, August eighth, twenty twenty three, August twenty eighth, September eighteenth, September twenty fifth, and November twentieth, twenty twenty three. I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Public comment, I had none. Check register and bills, give you a little bit to look through those, if anybody had any questions on them. I'd like to point out the use tax came in at about twenty-five this month. It's hopefully what we average, that's one of the, one of the things I keep an eye on. And the, uh, sales tax kinda straightened up itself from previous months. We were running a little bit behind, but everything's up now, so.
The total for the year of the use tax was over three hundred thousand dollars though, so that's.
Yeah, that's what we were. We're, that's the number that we were hoping for, was twenty-five a month, so.
Yep.
Hopefully it sticks to, I mean, hopefully we get more, but that's, that's a good, good revenue and good use. Two months. Yeah, so we're realistically looking at Novembers, so, yeah, it's, it's doing, doing really well. Alright, I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Committee reports, they're in your packet. Uh, Mr. Turner, do you have anything to add to your report?
No, just, uh, you guys.
Perfect, thank you. Uh, Mr. Bova's information's in your packet, they were busy as well. Mr. Sullivan's information's in your packet. Chief Helm, do you have anything to add to yours? You're, you're busy as well, so thank you for that. Alright, moving on to council liaison reports. Councilperson Fisher, library and school board.
Uh, the check for rees programs going on, I'm reading a book for May, uh, started on the fifteenth in visiting February. Uh, they've got a discussion group that you can go out onto the website and look up, sign up for that. They also have, this is solid for library. Uh, they also have, uh, January first to February tenth, Super Bowl food drive. So, um, the different libraries compete to see how much food they can gather up before Super Bowl. So, if you want to make a donation, that's the place to go, and that's all I ask.
Thank you sir. And Councilperson Schomburg for park board?
Um, I believe we're gonna talk about, um, some C Y information a little bit.
That's correct, we'll wait till then. Alright. Uh, sewage commission, Councilperson Winkelman? Councilperson Friedmeyer planning zoning?
Nothing at this time.
Zoning and appeals board, Councilperson Ginever?
I was just talking to Jeff here about, uh, what's going on at, uh, is it Hold- Holding Lane?
Holding Lane.
Holding Lane off of Holdinghausen. I got a call from Diana, uh, last week saying there was gonna be a zoning appeals hearing about that, but then I didn't hear back, so I don't know what's going on, but something might be going on with that. Unless somebody else knows whatever's going on.
I don't know. Mr. Eisenbys? Okay.
Just the last time Robert was here, Mr. Sullivan, I thought he said that they didn't, um, they allowed him to have so many apartments in it, and they couldn't make it work. But, they couldn't work on the building, they got it in all, um, here in the warmer months. They had several dumpsters, and they were putting the water drywall in it, where then you could, you know, when you drove by, you could see that it was completely empty. But their plan before was to think a bathroom in every apartment, which they'd have had to completely jackhammer all the floors, outage, might be what's going on now, I don't know.
Maybe. Alright, levy commission, Councilperson Kimfer? Alrighty. Public response, does anyone have anything in the audience that they'd like to talk about last month? None? Alright, moving on, old business, we have none. New business, we have none. Moving on to our ordinances.
Make a motion to read bill nineteen thirty-six dash twenty twenty-four on first read.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, can I have the first read of bill nineteen thirty-six dash twenty twenty-four by title only, please?
Bill number nineteen thirty-six dash twenty twenty-four by title only. In ordinance of the city of Crystal City, Missouri, authorizing the mayor microchurn to enter to contract with Cochran Engineering for fifty-five thousand seven hundred twelve dollars for engineering design, bidding, and construction services related to the community development grant program.
Make a motion to accept bill nineteen thirty-six dash twenty twenty-four on its first read.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to accept bill nineteen thirty-six dash twenty twenty-four on its first read by title only. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
Make a motion to read bill nineteen thirty-six dash twenty twenty-four on a second and final read.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Can we let everyone know what this is about?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, where did they, how are those locations picked? These are all.
Uh, those are, go ahead, Mr. Eisenbys.
So, I think in December we approved, uh, the going out of the ADA grant program. So, the one this year, we tried to go further up north, within, kind of going north and sections. We're pretty much done except one or two up there, so we went back toward one. So this is all the areas in Ward one, then we, you know, your, uh, different streets down there. Broadway gets towards all those, that's whole area down in there, you know, live ADA compliant, uh, ramps and these.
But they were.
They're kind of the older part.
But they were picked, Mr. Turner and you drove around to find a job to, that's how they were identified.
So, a part of this in February, Cochran will be here, we'll have to do a new house, we'll have to go, just go remember, we've got two or three of these, uh, do the needs assessment and all that kind of stuff, uh, to go along with these funds.
And this is just for the ramps, this has nothing to do with the rest of the sidewalks or anything?
So that.
Daniel, we'll get this, uh, on George and whatever.
We're hoping we'll be able to go, you know, seventy-five, eighty feet to get that ADA compliance.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure we have, or we're gonna have to do ourselves.
If everything works out right, very little. We'll see, we'll see where it all comes in on that, uh, price here, but we can kind of.
I just remember something on George crossing the fence there.
Well, yeah, and it was true, we played a little bit this past year in front of the one residence, and then the other side.
I just remember being worried about it.
So, we'll, we'll look at.
Out off of one side, to allow parking and fire trucks and stuff to get through, cause that's been a concern.
It's an entire big project down there, trying to see what we can make bigger, what we can make smaller, cause there's a few of them down there that have six or eight foot tree lawns, I don't remember.
Yeah, Broadway has about an eight foot tree lawn, we figured we could take three foot in each sidewalk on Broadway, like Pine Street, and then one sidewalk with tall curbs, and then we could hit thousands of them, but.
I think, uh, walnut's the skinniest walnut thing, you, you need almost a sidewalk on one side and curbs on the other.
So even still, keep like the bump outs, you know, and take those out later and just make those parkings.
Yes.
So it's just something we'll have to look at in a year or two from now, and we're.
Cause I, I know it's hard getting fire trucks down, through down there.
Alright, thank you. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, can I have the second and final reading of bill nineteen thirty-six dash twenty twenty-four by title only, please?
Bill number thirteen nineteen thirty-six dash twenty twenty-four by title only on its second and final reading. In ordinance of the city of Crystal City, Missouri, authorizing the mayor microchurn to enter into a contract with Cochran Engineering for fifty-five thousand seven hundred twelve dollars for engineering design, bidding, and construction services related to the community development grant program.
Make a motion to accept bill nineteen thirty-six dash twenty twenty-four on second and final read.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve bill nineteen thirty-six dash twenty twenty-four on its second and final reading by title only. Any more discussion?
Yes, I have. Also, on, on them sidewalks, you know, I know when they put them in, they have that bump out.
Yeah.
Is there any way in that area since that, that is so narrow? Can we just do a flat around there so that the fire trucks and emergency vehicles can? Because I, I noticed in other places that, you know how they bump out? Yeah. I mean, it's just a thought, I don't know if Cochran can do it, but if we could just make them where the big trucks can, they might have to run over the edge of it, but they won't have that big bump, you know? Cause I know it's tight down there.
Turner, you know what he's talking about?
Yeah.
Perfect, cause that works.
Thank you.
Alright. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries, I'll poll the council. Councilperson Bradley?
Yes.
Councilperson Kimfer?
Yes.
Councilperson Ginever?
Yes.
Councilperson Friedmeyer?
Yes.
Councilperson Fisher?
Yes.
Councilperson Schomburg?
Yes.
Councilperson Winkelman?
Yes.
Bill number nineteen thirty-six dash twenty twenty-four now becomes ordinance nineteen thirty-six dash twenty twenty-four, is that correct, Madam Clerk? Thank you ma'am.
Make a motion to read bill nineteen thirty-seven dash twenty twenty-four on its first read.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, can I have the first read of bill nineteen thirty-seven dash twenty twenty-four by title only, please?
Bill nineteen thirty-seven dash twenty twenty-four by title only on its first reading. In ordinance of the city of Crystal City, Missouri, authorizing the mayor microchurn to enter into a contract with Cochran Engineering and contract title one, two, three, four, and six, seven, and eight of the bid forms for the development of Daryl Hickey White Hart in the amount of two hundred and fifty-one thousand.
Thank you ma'am.
Make a motion to accept bill nineteen thirty-seven dash twenty twenty-four on its first read.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to accept bill nineteen thirty-seven dash twenty twenty-four on its first read by title only, any discussion?
Um, so what are items one through eight, and where did the, where?
Five was a bathroom. Five was a bathroom.
The bathrooms, the restaurants, that will have to come from somewhere else, right?
Well, they just did not have the funds. Eisenbys, you wanna elaborate on that?
As for the ADA grants, as in your package.
Yes.
And, and where did the two hundred and fifty-one thousand come from?
You're about midway through your packet for your list.
So, here is, I'm small, but here's what was proposed. So we're doing everything but the bathroom, that's the two hundred and fifty-one thousand.
There you go.
The park department has an eighty thousand dollar subsidy. Um, we use, uh, the former mayor appropriated a hundred thousand out of the original market fund that we got.
Need to be used by?
It needs to be used by end of twenty-sixth.
Okay.
Um, and then I will put a hundred thousand dollars into, from the ADA fund towards this park of this coming budget. We're also, so that's to a, we're going to, uh, fill out, we're actually in the process, Barbara and I were working on today remotely, uh, filling out a grant for the, uh, Terson Foundation. Uh, we plan to ask for the pavement of the two courts and the lighting on the two courts. If we can get that, this would be a hundred and ten thousand dollars. If we get that, then we can do the bathroom. If not, then, so it would be an addendum to this contract if we're awarded that grant, which we won't know until next.
Their hundred, so was their hundred and fifty?
So Jumper said, we're gonna prove this now, so Jumper should get us on the schedule.
Right.
They were a little bitter, uh, so that's why we decided to use these items. We know we can, we have money to do that, uh, and then we'll add an addendum if we can.
We can get it correct.
And I talked to the, to see if the grant, uh, sold their bid list, but not, no problem, we'll get the grant, but if we're, if we're proving this tonight, you know, everything.
Who did give us the timeframe, I'm starting?
Uh, no, it won't start last, or I'll love to hear, I remember it here, so sometimes, I don't know, I haven't, that's a grant.
All that work should be done by this fall. I think there was, uh, I don't remember the actual. Yeah, like it should be.
Yeah, it, it makes me just kind of, we're on the schedule, because we're on.
Weather and stuff, but it's happening this, yes.
Do you have, do you have plans of?
We do have a set of plans.
Sort of bathrooms and everything?
I believe there is a set of plans.
Okay, I like.
I think it's a block building, or a concrete.
It was a block building.
Yeah.
It wasn't a prefab, I don't think they bid a pref.
They, they, there's two or three of yourselves, like the concrete one is a prefab, and you're putting the other, it's in the box.
Yeah.
Are existing bathrooms set?
Not now.
No, at the current part.
So, we'll, if, you know, if it comes back, we'll be, if not successful in the grant, maybe we can look at the bathrooms and see if we can add more, it kind of depends on, well, I haven't looked at the budget enough to know if we need to do stormwaterize this year. So if we can get a scaled down bathroom, maybe like if a, if a soft uphill.
Yes.
Maybe something smaller, we can do that, but we'll, we'll see, looking like it allows them where.
We were looking at the money on hand and what we could get done soon. And, uh, it's been a long time in the making, so, that's, thank you Jason. Alright, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Mr. Bradley?
Make a motion to read bill nineteen thirty-seven dash twenty twenty-four on second and final read.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, can I have the second and final reading of bill nineteen thirty-seven dash twenty twenty-four by title only, please?
Bill number nineteen thirty-seven dash twenty twenty-four by title only on its first reading. In ordinance of the city of Crystal City, Missouri, authorizing the mayor microchurn to enter into a contract with Jumper saving and contracting for item one, two, three, four, six, seven, and eight of the bid forms for the development of Daryl Hickey White Hart in the amount of two hundred and fifty-one thousand.
Thank you.
Make a motion to accept bill nineteen thirty-seven dash twenty twenty-four on its second and final read.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve bill nineteen thirty-seven dash twenty twenty-four on its second and final reading by title only. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries, I'll poll the council. Councilperson Bradley?
Yes.
Councilperson Kimfer?
Yes.
Councilperson Ginever? Councilperson Friedmeyer?
Yes.
Councilperson Fisher?
Yes.
Councilperson Schomburg?
Yes.
Councilperson Winkelman?
Yes.
Bill number nineteen thirty-seven dash twenty twenty-four now becomes ordinance nineteen thirty-seven dash twenty twenty-four, is that correct, Madam Clerk? Thank you ma'am.
Make a motion to read bill nineteen thirty-eight dash twenty twenty-four on its first read.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, can I have the first read of bill nineteen thirty-eight dash twenty twenty-four by title only, please?
Bill number nineteen thirty-eight dash twenty twenty-four by title only on its first reading. In ordinance of the city council of the city of Crystal City, Missouri, authorizing the mayor microchurn to execute agreements with the Jackson County public for district, the Crystal City sewage commission, and the city of Bestis to transfer sewage treatment and system to the home halfway, by the Crystal City sewage commission, for benefit of the city, the Jackson County public for district, repealing all ordinances and tasks they're with and establishing effective dates.
Thank you ma'am. You're, you're good, I just need an approval. You're normally my guy for approval, the first one. I need an appro. Yes sir. Thank you. A motion has been made and seconded to accept bill nineteen thirty-eight dash twenty twenty-four on its first reading by title only, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
Make a motion to read bill nineteen thirty-eight dash twenty twenty-four on its second and final read.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, can I have the second and final reading of bill nineteen thirty-eight dash twenty twenty-four by title only, please?
Bill number nineteen thirty-eight dash twenty twenty-four on its second and final reading. In ordinance of the city of Crystal City, Missouri, authorizing the mayor microchurn to execute agreements with the Jackson County public for district, the Bestis Crystal City Sewage Commission, and the city of Bestis to transfer sewage treatment and system to the home halfway, by the Crystal City Sewage Commission, for the benefit of the Jackson County public for district, repealing all ordinances and tasks they're with and establishing effective dates.
Make a motion to accept bill nineteen thirty-eight dash twenty twenty-four on second and final read.
And seconded to approve bill nineteen thirty-eight dash twenty twenty-four on its second and final reading by title only. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries, I'll poll the council. Councilperson Bradley?
Yes.
Councilperson Kimfer?
Yes.
Councilperson Ginever?
Yes.
Councilperson Friedmeyer?
Yes.
Councilperson Fisher?
Yes.
Councilperson Schomburg?
Yes.
Councilperson Winkelman?
Yes.
Thank you. Bill number nineteen thirty-eight dash twenty twenty-four now becomes ordinance nineteen thirty-eight dash twenty twenty-four, is that correct, Madam Clerk? Thank you. Alright, I think we have one. You're fine. What you got? Nineteen thirty-nine. Nope, you're good. Thank you, Brandon. Yes sir.
Make a motion to read bill nineteen thirty-nine dash twenty twenty-four on its first read.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, can I have the first reading of bill nineteen thirty-nine dash twenty twenty-four by title only, please?
Bill number nineteen thirty-nine dash twenty twenty-four by title only on its first reading. In ordinance of the city of Crystal City, Missouri, authorizing the mayor microchurn to execute the access agreement between the city of Crystal City, Missouri, owner, and D C D Industries Incorporated. The Crystal City Sewage Commission says the state of Missouri voluntarily can accept it. And the D C D, the third rule has to be located within the city limits.
Make a motion to accept bill nineteen thirty-nine dash twenty twenty-four on its first read.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to accept bill nineteen thirty-nine dash twenty twenty-four on its first read by title only. Any discussion? Yes sir.
I'm unfamiliar with this, I want to get an answer.
Absolutely, Mr. Eisenbys?
So as part of the P B G, I think it was a P B G property, that was a brown, brown chip site. So this is, uh, coming back twenty some odd years later, they did testing all last summer. Um, so, it is testing, uh, submitted their phase, cleanup phase, whatever they're going to do, to D N R, D N R to approve it. So this is extending, it recently did last February, allowing them to get in.
Allowing working on the property.
Get on the property, so, but it was part of it, but we're doing, no, we're, no, no, just allowing them access to the property.
Do, do you know this is, is this called phase one or phase two? There's just multiple phases to the cleanup program, right?
Yeah, so the email that he's sent me, uh, a level three ecological risk assessment was recommended in the level two E R A report. M D N R agreed to the work plan as an extension. Once we have an occurrence from M D N R, we need to complete additional field activities that we're currently targeting for the spring of twenty twenty-four. P B G will request an extension, just in access, to the agency in access, who agree on that.
I'm not sure that tells me anything, but that's, that's more detail than I had.
Uh, the people who don't know.
Yes, thank you.
Work plan. Uh, well, the, I believe it's usually, whatever, whatever incurs.
Yeah, who's paying for the work plan, us or them?
Uh, the, you see.
We aren't paying for any, this has no cost to the city.
They asked for this for a long time, and Brandon was involved, and we could never get anybody to agree to pay more, cause I'm like, we're not. We didn't do it, and then finally, and they change the people two every time, since the last year or so. This is an extension of what we started last year.
Pretty much. Alright, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
Uh, make a motion to read bill nineteen thirty-nine dash twenty twenty-four on second and final read.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, can I have the second and final reading of bill nineteen thirty-nine dash twenty twenty-four by title only, please?
Bill number nineteen thirty-nine dash twenty twenty-four on second, second and final reading by title only. In ordinance of the city of Crystal City, Missouri, authorizing the mayor microchurn to extend the access agreement between the city of Crystal City, Missouri, owner, P B G Industries Incorporated, the Crystal City Sewage Corporation, to participate in the state of Missouri voluntary cleanup program. And the D C D, for third rule has to be located within the city limits.
Make a motion to accept bill nineteen thirty-nine dash twenty twenty-four on second and final read.
Second. A motion has been made and seconded to approve bill nineteen thirty-nine dash twenty twenty-four on its second and final reading by title only. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries, I'll poll the council. Councilperson Bradley?
Yes.
Councilperson Kimfer?
Yes.
Councilperson Ginever?
Yes.
Councilperson Friedmeyer?
Yes.
Councilperson Fisher?
Yes.
Councilperson Schomburg?
Yes.
Councilperson Winkelman?
Yes.
Bill number nineteen thirty-nine dash twenty twenty-four now becomes ordinance nineteen thirty-nine dash twenty twenty-four, is that correct, Madam Clerk? Thank you ma'am. Uh, city administrators report, you guys have a copy of Jason's report? Uh, you guys have any questions for Mr. Eisenbys? And Mr. Eisenbys, do you have anything to add to?
I do not, um, there's a couple things there, um, state of the county address, anybody, we have one ticket left, if anybody wants to go, it's really fun stuff. Um, we did not buy a table for the cultural diversity lesson, we did buy a sponsorship, we will buy tickets if anybody wants to go, um.
When do you have to know by?
Uh, I don't know, really, uh, they didn't say, uh, four months after opening the hotel. We, we've never been able to fill table, I know the mayor has a previous, uh, planned engagement. If you have anybody tickets, anybody wants to go, um, just letting you know. And then the city of Marne is planning to take a bus to John City, again, grueling stuff, if you want to see.
Only for like if we need to, we need to call Ken Waller, we'll, I'll text him on the phone. You know, we have a good relationship with our state representative, so, that's pretty much it. Alright, thank you sir. Uh, mayor's report, I just want to point out our police and fire departments done an excellent job in the cold weather, helping the public. They've both been very busy, as well as our street and water department. They've done a great job keeping our streets passable during these snowstorms and ice, and, uh, our water on. So, they've been doing a lot of work, when it's cold out, that's their busy season, so, unfortunately, but they've been doing a very good job, so. That's pretty much all I have, we're working through the budget. Um, you got that timeline on Jason's list, there will be a, uh, work session coming up too, so, you see that in there. And that's all I have, so, I'll go ahead and go around roundtable. Councilperson Bradley? Councilperson Kimfer? Councilperson Ginever?
Of course, I got something.
That's alright. That's why we have roundtable.
Um, I, I want to let at least the chief know that, um, and all the other heads of the departments that I do appreciate this. of the departments, that I do appreciate the, the reports that you do. I, I did reports for, I think about forty years, weekly reports, and I'm glad I don't have to do them anymore, but I do read them and I appreciate them, it's, you don't just fill up paper with them. And I want to know what an empty hand control and self-defense technique is.
You want to know?
Yeah. Every. With, with, without a weapon, I suppose, right? Okay, all right.
Chief, is that when you guys clear the?
Were you looking at training?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we actually, uh, we had, um, an instructor from the county, so I'm in Jersey County, and he's a high level trainer in that area, he ran all, all sorts of, through ways, he cleared out this council room, I'm coming in here, so, um, having used opportunities to approach it all back, I did this a few years ago, and really good deal, so.
Very good.
The goal of it is, is to take people into custody safely, so nobody gets hurt, and you don't have to use a higher level of force, that's really what the goal is.
Even, even without a taser too, I suppose, right?
Before taser.
Before taser. Cool. Um, just a couple other things, I, I got to meet my neighbor between the last council meeting and now, his name's, uh, Dan Camerer, and he is the owner of the, oh, Knob.
Notting Hills.
Notting Hill, thank you, Notting Hill Place there in Pea.
Wedding thing.
Yeah, wedding thing, right. And, uh, and, uh, in case everybody doesn't know, I think they've abandoned the thought of making it a wedding venue, I think he's just gonna make it into his own residence now, is what he told me, so.
Really?
Yeah, one of the reasons was because he assumed that he could get parking for it and thought that the city owned the PPG property and that he, he could negotiate a parking deal, and so he called Jim Kennedy and, and Jim Kennedy did not, uh, have a good call with this guy. So, you can imagine what Jim told him. Um, so he's, he's just gonna make it into, but he's been working on it, so I'm kind of impressed with what he's doing. He's gonna make that back portion into a garage, he said. So, that's gonna be a big garage. Um, one other thing, um, my ward just happens to be the ward that gets like trash pickup on Monday, and this year it was bad because Christmas was on Sunday, New Year's was on a Sunday. We knew that the Mondays we had off, but everybody assumed that Tuesday we would get services, while city had holidays on Tuesday after Christmas and the Tuesday after New Year's, uh, and I looked around, you know, all the public information that I could find to see how will you alert the people about that, and it looked like the only place I could find was on Facebook.
It was on the water bill.
It was on the water bill too? Okay, uh, both, both dates?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, huh, so I don't read the water bill.
No, you're not alone. You're not alone.
Yeah, well, I don't want to look at a bill, I just want to get it on my, um, well, I was wondering if, well, I, I saw what you have on your list, that we're gonna try to redo the website, I was wondering if we could say, you know, go to the Facebook page for daily updates or something like that, it'd be nice if we had, now, I did call City Hall and there was a message on, on, on the receiving thing, automated message that said that it was closed, that was good, but it just wasn't real apparent, I had a lot of people asking me about it, so. You too?
With the new website, we're gonna look at alerting people, like have apps and stuff, we're gonna, we're gonna utilize that pretty well, so.
Okay, cool.
People have asked about the calendar being updated or not.
Yeah, yeah.
Not, no, no, that. Right, but it's gonna be, we're, it'll be a work in progress, but hopefully by the end of this year, we have a, a new functioning website that's utilized more.
Yeah, if the website's hard to update, I, yeah, we should change it.
Yeah, well, we're, if they're gonna make the.
It's in the budget, we're looking for it, we're, we're trying to.
Okay.
If it works. If it works in the budget, we are.
Okay. Yeah, I understand. Okay, okay, thanks for your time, that's all I wanted.
Thank you, Jack. Councilperson Freidmeyer?
I, I have nothing.
Councilperson Fisher? We didn't, the street guys have done really well. Councilperson Schomburg? Yeah, they don't break on sixty degree day. They're not, this, this is their busy time, so unfortunately, they get, yeah, it's not great. Councilperson Winkelman? All right, uh, Treasure Cherry, in the audience? No, sir? All right. Uh, I'll entertain motion to adjourn. I have a motion in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we are adjourned. Yeah. That's what I find my stuff with, I always have two. Yeah, it does pretty good. They, they always dis, you remember Picarella always saying people stole his piss? They do. Thanks, man. Thank you, buddy. Yes.